Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Planning Commission of Bloomington. It is May 8th. The Planning Commission is made up of seven members, all seven are present this evening. Each member volunteers their time and is a Bloomington resident. Members are appointed by the City Council. The Planning Commission is advisory to the City Council for most items. The Commission makes recommendations and the City Council has the final decision-making authority. There are certain applications that the Planning Commission can approve or deny on its own, subject to appeal to the City Council. We have one item going on to the City Council this evening. For each item, there will be a staff report, then a chance for the applicant to present, then a chance for any member of the public to provide testimony. Then the Commission will close the public hearing and discuss the item before any action is taken. Our first order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item one this evening is, does have a public hearing. It is a city code amendment for the Small Business Codes and Process Phase One Ordinance. And Planning Supervisor Caston Day, you have the staff report.
Thank you Chair and Planning Commission and good evening. I'm just gonna go over a few things related to our Small Business Code and Processes Phase One Ordinance. So I just want to give a little bit of a project background on some of the outreach engagement that got us to this point, kind of walk through the ordinance itself and some of those policy changes, and then of course, the staff recommendation. So this item related to small businesses was added by the City Council to the 2024 Planning Commission Work Plan, kind of based out of support in both the city's 2040 Comprehensive Plan and the BTT Strategic Plan. There were six topics that were presented in study sessions to both you and the City Council kind of back in December and January of this year. We have four of those topics moving forward here in Phase One. And then two of those items, one, the grease interception discussion. There are no proposed ordinances at this time and instead we'll be kind of working with building and inspections and with folks kind of affected by that to kind of give them kind of educational materials on how to right-size that system for them. And then the trash enclosure standards, we want to bring back in a separate discussion at a later time this year. And mainly that being that seemed to be kind of the one topic at both the Planning Commission and City Council that had kind of more mixed reviews or not clear consensus. And I think some of that was probably just a function of the number of topics that we were covering here. But certainly want to continue moving that forward, just also didn't want to stop the momentum on these four items that had a little bit more consensus. So the overall goal with the ordinance again is to identify and lower barriers for business formation and operations here in the city. And so, let's see where this... One of the slides went missing, that's okay. So I guess part of the topics that this ordinance addresses tonight are four. So modifications to our odor mitigation standards to reduce costs and process for food establishments, modifications to parking flexibility measures, which includes a new flexibility measure related to the reuse of commercial and industrial buildings, some clarifications around our roof-mounted mechanical equipment screening, and then finally modifications to our exterior building materials, including the allowance of coating certain materials. How we got to this point, again, there was outreach engagement done by both our Port Authority staff and in planning, having those direct connections like out with business owners and kind of anecdotally hearing what they were saying. We had a Let's Talk Bloomington page with a survey for business owners. We did some engagement with architects as well as being present at some of our larger chamber events in the city and presenting this idea and seeking feedback. So number of ways that got to those six topics and then the four that we're talking to tonight. And so I might, if it's helpful, I can just pause after each one if there's any clarifying questions after each topic, because I know there's a lot there. And so I'll just start first with the odor mitigation. This ordinance proposes to reduce the separation distance required for odor mitigation from 250 feet to 150 feet, as well as clarifying that measurement distance from the exhaust location to the nearest residential dwelling. It also designates the city building official to approve odor mitigation systems and removes the certification requirement from the engineer or from a certified engineer. And part of that was that it can be quite difficult for business owners to get that certification from engineers because you can't fully mitigate odor or fully like remove odor. And so there was sometimes hesitation from engineers to sign off on that and kind of posed a difficult situation for some business owners. So staff felt like we have the internal kind of capacity and knowledge to be able to help make that determination and assist businesses there. And then finally, it removes the odor mitigation requirement for type-two hoods. And so those are the kinds of hoods that deal more with steam, but it still maintains the requirement for type-one. And so those are the things that are more like grills and grease and those more heavy-duty kind of smells and odors that you might see in restaurants. I would say from the, from both study sessions, there's pretty general support for these items. So there wasn't much change from the study session. So I don't know if there's any just clarifying questions on odor mitigation?
Any questions? Commissioner White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious, in terms of the approval authority, just to clarify my question. So in the past, a business would have had to probably pay an engineer for that certification. Now that certification or that approval would come from a city staff person? Is that just part of the current certification or current approval process? Is there any additional fee for that? Or do we have the, do we know for a fact that we have staff on capacity to handle that additional work?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Commissioner White. Yes, that was, that's correct, that previously it would have required a business owner to kind of pay to have those plans kind of stamped or approved by an engineer. And with this change, I mean, it would just be part of their typical building permit process that gets reviewed by staff in making sure that it meets all building code requirements and the building official kind of signing that off with the approval of the building permit.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you Chair. Planning Supervisor Caston Day. You got a bullet point up here for clarifying measurement from the exhaust location to the nearest dwelling. So what is, what is the current code? How does it read currently or is it vague?
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, Commissioner Cunningham. So the current measurement is just from the, I believe, the nearest wall of the building to the nearest wall of the residential dwelling. And so depending on, you know, I think in cases of like multi-tenant buildings, kind of depending on, you could have really the odor mitigation on one end of the building, but it could happen that other end is what's closest to the residential home and so we'd be taking the measurement from there. So the idea here was just to have a better rationale, I think, for requiring that and having a more accurate measure of kind of where that the odor source is coming from to measure to the residential dwelling.
Thank you.
Any additional questions before we move on? All right, seeing none.
All right. The next item was parking flexibility. So again, the city currently has six kind of flexibility measures that businesses can use to reduce their required minimum parking in our code. However, those kind of six have different levels of who approves it and those didn't quite align with some of the efforts that we've done in other ordinances around streamlining development. And so there were some situations where it could be that staff was approving or could now approve a site plan, but then the parking flexibility, if needed, maybe still fell on the Planning Commission or City Council or vice versa. And so it just kind of can create some confusion or awkwardness around having these different authorities to approve that. And so this ordinance would designate the city entity that has the responsibility to approve the site plan would also approve the parking flexibility. And so there are some cases where that would be a staff approval, some cases where it'd be Planning Commission approval. And then in our plan development, the case that the City Council would approve those, that parking flexibility. And then in addition, this ordinance would establish a seventh flexibility measure related to the reuse of existing commercial and industrial buildings. So a building or tenant space that's 10,000 square feet or less could apply or to get a 25% reduction in their minimum parking requirements. In this ordinance, we also kind of clarify that that staff do have to make the determination that the site is in fact constrained and doesn't physically have the room to add additional parking to meet the minimum parking requirement. And then again, to ensure that there's no traffic safety concerns or access concerns on the site. And so this is just an example here to kind of illustrate. You have a 4,250-square-foot building and let's say we, this is going to be a full office use. Based on our current parking minimums, we require one stall per 285 square feet. That would require 15 parking stalls. This site only has 13 and currently physically doesn't have the room to add additional parking, code-complying parking. And so it could be a situation where we run to some of these older buildings where someone wants to reuse it, maybe this wasn't an office use before and now someone's proposing it to be. We can run into challenges around this, this parking minimum requirement. And so with this proposed flexibility, what would have been 15 stalls would allow them to, would only require 11 stalls. And so they have 13 to be complying and to be able to reuse that building in an appropriate manner. So I think, and then I guess one note we made too, just to also help clarify, with any of our parking flexibility measures, it's the current process and we're not proposing to change that. And this would remain that, you know, staff can require a parking study if it's also, we feel like it warrants or is needed to help in making that determination around parking flexibility. So I'll pause there if there's any clarifying questions.
Any questions? All right, seeing none.
Okay, great. The third topic on rooftop screening, the main piece, I guess there's two main pieces. The first is just clarifying that the need for screening applies when it's visible from the ground level. I think we acknowledge as staff that screening can be quite costly and so we just want to make sure it's reserved for situations that present the most significant impact to the public and kind of align with, I think, the intent of the code. And so it's just, again, clarifying that screening is required if it's visible from an adjacent public or private street or sidewalk at the ground level, that screening would be required. And then the second piece of that is to exempt exhaust pipes from rooftop equipment screening. Again, I think staff, we acknowledge that often exhaust pipes can be quite tall and difficult to screen. There are a wide mix of industrial uses and facilities in Bloomington that have presented, you know, situations where screening requirements have been challenging or can be unclear to staff. And I think from staff's perspective, you know, we want to, again, save it for situations where it can, this can, screening exhaust pipes can be quite difficult kind of from a construction standpoint and actually probably limits the visual benefit or doesn't meet a cost-benefit analysis. Like if it's super, super tall and you had to screen it, the screening is also that tall. And at that point, is it really screening something or is it still just like a really tall structure that you see? So it's just kind of making it more clear that we wouldn't require screening on the exhaust pipes. Pause if there's any clarifying questions there.
Questions there? All right, seeing none.
Okay. And then the last topic area was related to exterior materials. I think this, this is the one where I just noted that, I think, at the Planning Commission study session, there was a little bit more discussion or maybe some disagreements. So just want to acknowledge that. And I think we had general support at the council study session on these items. So we, staff decided to kind of move forward as it was presented in the study session. The first topic area is related to painting and coating. And so this proposed ordinance would allow the painting or coating of certain primary materials, mainly being brick that currently isn't allowed to be painted or coated, could be with this code amendment. I think some of the reasons that staff decided to move forward is that we currently allow coating of secondary materials in the city. And then before these exterior materials standards were established, if any business had a coated surface, they are grandfathered in and allowed to continue to recoat their surface. And so there are examples already in the city of painted brick and painted masonry in the city. So it's, well, this does open it up to other surfaces that could be painted. It's things that already exist in a lot of ways in Bloomington as well. One compromise or one thing that we added from the study session was to establish, the city has adopted the International Property Maintenance Code. And so we just wanted to pull some standards from that code, put them directly in our exterior materials section as just another opportunity for our environmental health staff that would be doing the enforcement of our zoning code, to be able to have that as a reference to ensure that building facades are being properly maintained and there's no, no concern around degradation of the facade with coating. These are just some examples of currently painted buildings in Bloomington that are legally painted. I would say in most cases, it's probably older industrial buildings that have always been allowed, were kind of grandfathered in to be coated and continue to be recoded, as well as a lot of hotels, I think, are probably the two big examples. So these were just showing some places in the city that have current, currently painted brick and stucco. One of the other changes relates to our primary and secondary material ratio. So our current code has a ratio of 85% primary materials and 15% secondary materials. This ordinance would propose to bring Bloomington in more alignment with cities in the metro to have a ratio of 65% primary materials and then secondary, 35% secondary materials. The proposed ordinance also includes a table that I think just more clearly lays out what we define or accept as primary and secondary materials. And so those aren't really changing, it's just to list it out there more clearly on how staff have always interpreted, because there's kind of the caveat that there's any equivalent material as approved by the planning manager. And so some of these things were things staff have always interpreted as equivalent material. Just wanting to make it more explicit in the list for applicants and architects to kind of know, know what we allow. So here, again, just on the screen shows some of those different materials of what's primary and what's secondary. We also, this ordinance would slightly adjust some of our definitions for architectural concrete, architectural concrete masonry units, as well as metal panel systems. And again, it's just to try to account for kind of current construction trends and methods. Concrete panels and cast-in-concrete have come a long way and can do a number of textures and patterns. You know, you can make it look like brick, but it's actually concrete. And so just wanting to make sure that we've always allowed those kinds of different patterns and materials, but again, just making it more clear around some of the things that we would allow. So you can kind of see a variety of different textures and patterns that concrete can be. Similar for concrete masonry units, this would be a secondary material. But again, just making sure our definition kind of accounts for the variety of ways that the block faces can, can be manipulated to create the texture. I would note that these have always needed to be integrally colored and that's not changing. And so in these cases, you wouldn't be able to paint concrete panels or blocks. The color is typically a dye that's mixed in with the concrete and it's integrally colored and can give you, again, a variety of different colors and textures. And then for metal panel systems, again, just kind of further clarifying that there's a number of metal panels out there and just want to make sure our definition accounts for that. So it's clarifying that we allow insulated panels, composite panels, and single-skin metal panels. I think those were the main things in exterior materials. Any clarifying questions there?
Questions? All right, seeing none.
Okay, I'm almost done, I promise. The last slide here is just, again, with any kind of code amendment, there's typically some minor cleanup items. So in this ordinance, we'd be updating the language of odor suppression to odor mitigation, again, kind of to an earlier point that, to help kind of set expectations for both staff and public that odors can't like be 100% eliminated, but there are ways that we can mitigate that. So just making sure that language is in the code. Ensuring consistency across our code, for example, there's a proposed amendment related to the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. But again, it's just to align our secondary materials in that section as well as our exterior materials section, and then removing any kind of subsections or definitions that are no longer relevant. And so there's an example there, interexterior materials that references coating to like graffiti-resistant, a coating that's like graffiti-resistant or something and that just wouldn't, doesn't really apply anymore. And so just wanting to clean that up and shorten our, our code. So the staff recommendation here is on the screen to move to recommend the proposed ordinance. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none. The city is the applicant in this item, on this item. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone who wishes to testify in the chambers can do so. Do we have anyone online who wishes to testify? No one online, looking for a motion to close the public hearing. So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. Onto discussion. Commissioner Cookton.
Well, I guess I'll get us started here, Madam Chair. First of all, I'm pretty excited because this item appears to have received our Best of Bloomington seal. So it's great to be here. It kind of feels like we're part of Oprah's Book Club or something with that. So that's very exciting. But to the matter, we talked about this at the study session and I still feel this way, is I really struggle with the exterior materials. First with the coatings, I mean, we've seen this come before so many times and we've always said no. And I still maintain that that's the right position to be on. I, I'm not in, just, I think it's going to be really hard to enforce and it just adds burden to our people who do have to enforce it and just another layer of things they have to do. And I'd rather just keep it the way it is. I, I don't see that as being a big issue. So I'm not in favor of the exterior coatings. More, more so though, the secondary materials is the thing I really don't like. Increasing the breadth and quantity of secondary materials with the EIFS and some of these things, and I'm just not in favor of it principally, well, principally because the people that are, like, we've seen that come before us a bunch of times too. And the people that always ask for a variance on the percentage of secondary materials is always, it's big business. It's the apartment developers, it's the owner of this strip center, not the tenant of the strip center. And so this item is supposed to be focused on small business standards. And if you're a small business, you're, you're starting a taco restaurant or, you know, a quilt shop or whatever, you probably are not owning the building. You're a tenant in a strip center or something. And so I don't see this as impacting small business. All I think we're really getting here is helping big business and we get lower-quality buildings. And so, you know, sometimes on these items where it's kind of a mixed bag of things, like, hey, you don't like some stuff, but it's not going to stop you from supporting the item as a whole. In this case, it does. I cannot support this application unless we were to strike out the items regarding the exterior materials, I can't get there.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you Chair. I think that is, Commissioner Cookton's commentary is interesting and definitely, I definitely see the point of, you know, these buildings basically not being, for the most part, owned by small businesses. The only thing, I wonder how much of this actually flows through, but like, if, if it does end up reducing, and I don't know by what percent, you could reduce the cost of construction with using these materials, but if it reduces the cost of construction and that then flows through to the end user or allows for more projects to go through, I can see that as a benefit to small businesses. But I guess that's, that's the only consideration I'd want to point out regarding your point.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you Chair. The exhaust locations and the screening, I'm all for. It seems like a no-brainer and would really benefit small businesses. I agree with Commissioner Cookton on the coatings and the EIFS. Having a, having a construction background, Commissioner Curry is right that it is a cost savings to, to paint a naturally colored brick or CMU, concrete masonry unit. It's cheaper than buying integrally colored, but I'm worried about enforcement from the city on, and, you know, Planning Supervisor Caston Day made a great point that, you know, these, these coatings have come a long way, but there's still something that needs to be maintained as opposed to something that's integrally colored and will be that way as it weathers and as the facade degrades. And so I'm, I'm with Commissioner Cookton on this one where I'm a little worried about approving this entire item as lo, as long as it includes the coatings. Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
I guess I'll chime in here too. I think probably that yellow, you know, moderate support was probably me. I, I can see a benefit to allowing coating. I think I brought this up last time, but the Centennial Lakes property that was all brick, got painted white and gray and looks really great and kind of a fresh new look to it without probably having to have a ton of construction to then change exterior materials. So I, I can see the benefit, but I also understand other commissioners' perspective regarding keeping that up. I, I also am a little concerned about the exterior materials. I'm less concerned about the painting and more concerned about the use of exterior materials. I do have one question and maybe you can help Planning Supervisor Caston Day. When we provide our incentive in the OHO program regarding exterior materials, what is, what's the lowest that people can go in primary materials in the lowest that people can go in primary materials in the OHO?
Chair Albrecht, let me, I have some of that language in here. Now I just need to find it. Oh, okay, what's the first one? So yeah, this is the kind of proposed changes, I guess, to the OHO. And so I guess this incentive that was called an alternative exterior material allowance, that we just want to change the secondary material allowance to just, again, have consistent language across the code. But this gets at, depending on the level of affordability that you offer, you can see there it goes to either 100%, 75%, or 50% of secondary materials are allowed on a facade, with the caveat that those are facades that don't face the public street. And so if it's, you know, on the corner, those two facades that are along the street still have to comply with the current 85, 15%, or if approved, the 65, 35% primary and secondary materials. But in this case, the incentive is that for some of those facades that aren't just really that visible from the, from the street, or kind of from the public's view, they could then, instead of that 15%, go to either 50, 75, or 100% of secondary materials.
And a follow up question. Was there any discussion on the same kind of trigger for small businesses or commercial properties? Because I would say, if it's not public facing, I think I'm good with 65%. I probably am not when it's public facing.
Oh, sure. Yeah. And Chair, Chair Albrecht, just a clarification, you're talking about, like, if on a commercial or industrial building on a facade that doesn't face the public street to allow more secondary materials. Yeah. So that was something we did consider, and it was brought up in the council study session as well. But we did consider it. I don't think we added it here. I guess, yeah, we were kind of thinking of it probably more on the, we didn't want to, this OHO incentive is a very popular incentive, so we didn't want to do a bunch of changes to kind of jeopardize that. And the OHO is kind of going through its own, another round of a nexus study, and will likely have some proposed amendments. And so we didn't want to really do too much work on that. But certainly, I guess, yeah, with commercial or industrial buildings, that certainly could be, could be an option to consider. But I guess, yeah, we just didn't put it as part of this proposal.
Okay. I would only be comfortable if we put some sort of trigger in that it was either public facing or not to change the exterior materials to be, to be that low.
Sure. And yeah, I guess, sorry, maybe Chair Albrecht, I would just add to, you know, I think there is a precedent for that in other cities as well that do that. I think a lot of cities that have that language have more of the form-based code. And that's a common thing is that, yeah, they're not necessarily dictating the bulk or materials on those facades that don't face the public street. I can't recall off the top of my head for some other cities in the area that don't have a form-based code if they have that, that language, but that certainly can be a possibility, or cities do have that kind of flexibility.
Great. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I agree with that. I think that's a good point, just the differentiation between the street-facing and non-street-facing. Going back to my original thought, I guess, I mean, I think Commissioner Cunningham is in construction. If you were to change, you know, the materials, if, you know, make these adjustments, like, is that like a 2% savings on construction potentially? Or is it 10% or 25%? Or, because I, I guess I'm kind of rethinking it and realizing it may not be that big of a difference in terms of price anyway. So it might just kind of be pointless in terms of financial.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. It really depends on the project. Chair Albrecht referenced Centennial Lakes. That refresh project, the, if they were going to tear the facade off the buildings and put a new one up versus painting it, that's a potentially very large savings. For a new build, it's very minor. Your facade is a smaller percentage of your overall construction cost. And so it could, if a, if a project is balancing on the tip of a knife trying to go or not go, it could be a deciding factor, but it, it's not a major cost, like a structure, or, you know, earthwork, electrical, mechanical systems, things like that.
Yeah. So I'd be open to some of the changes proposed by Chair and Commissioner Cookton.
Commissioner Isa.
I just wanted to listen to everybody's take before I spoke, but thank you, Madam Chair. I was, I agree with Commissioner Cookton and most of the takes by the rest of the commissioners here. I feel like this targets more so, or targets less the small businesses, and that was intended impacted, it may not be targeting them, and may have unintended consequences. I know there was like a, a small store on Portland and American Boulevard that was trying to expand and open a cafe. It's a halal market, so it's like a supermarket. So they're trying to add a cafe. They went to the city to submit permits, and they had an agreement with the next store lot, because you have to have a certain number of parking spots. It was a church. And they had a really hard time, you know? And it's like, from the angle of small businesses, I see how, so I see, I see where we're trying to go with it, but I feel like it may not target them, you know? And if, if developers, if this benefits developers more, and it's not a big, it may not flow down to the tenants, as Commissioner Curry highlighted, then it might just be, it might not get what was intended done. So that's my overall take. And yeah, thank you.
Any other thoughts, discussion? Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Isa, I don't know how well you know the, the kind of ins and outs of that project that you were referencing, the halal market with the cafe. But do you, if you had spoken with the owner, would they benefit from, I guess, the biggest thing it seems like we're talking about is coatings, right? So if, if they were going to put an addition on, and then recoat the whole building to make kind of a more monolithic facade, to not have the additions stand to stick out, do you think that that would be helpful to a business owner of that scale, or not make a huge difference?
So I was coming more for, more so from the angle of the parking limitations. So they had, they wanted seating in the cafe, you know? So I guess it's nothing to do with the exterior. So more so the parking. I saw something about parking, so I just brought that up. But yeah, and my point basically was that there's things that we could do that would better, maybe that would directly benefit small business owners, like allowing something like that, you know? Because there is parking, just not on this specific site, but they had a parking agreement, because the church, you know, it's mostly packed on, on Sundays. But yeah, I guess to answer your question, it wouldn't impact them much, I don't think, at least.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Johnson.
Chair Albrecht, thank you. If I can, I don't want to direct the discussion in a good policy discussion, so thank you for the opportunity to provide a little bit more context. A couple of things, just to think about. One is, the city has been making intentional efforts to make our codes less complex. Bloomington, by comparison, do a lot of our suburban peers have more complex standards and codes. And for many ways, that's a very effective and good thing. It depends on the situation. So just keeping that thought process in mind in terms of specifically tailoring standards to small business. The second piece of it is that small business can be a difficult thing to define. You can describe that by the legal formation of the entity, by the number of employees, whether or not it's local ownership. There's a lot of different ways to do that, and some of them are not, I think, would potentially violate some legal considerations as well. I mean, certainly Kevin can weigh in on that. I think you have to do it carefully, is what I'm getting at. So thinking about those two kind of bigger picture elements in some of the proposals before you. The third bigger picture thing I would say is that when you're adopting a citywide policy, then yes, all parties are going to benefit, or whether it be big business, small business. So having a discussion about who benefits more, I'm not saying that's out of bounds. I'm just saying that it's going to affect everyone as it's proposed. Specific to the exterior materials and the coatings. So how did we assemble the list of topics within the ordinance? I want to assure you that some of these things came up directly from tenants trying to fill vacant tenant spaces in multi-tenant centers with specific to refreshing their storefront. And that had to do, in some cases, of coatings, in some cases of adding more exterior materials in the way that they wanted to reflect their brand of their store. In a couple cases, those facades were non-conforming for exterior material requirements, so they couldn't add any more secondary materials. So that is kind of what got this started. Same thing with painting. Some businesses in some cities allow painting, some cities don't. More cities allow it than don't allow it. But painting is a way to refresh a building facade related to their specific brand. So these things have come up with tenants, not new development, not new buildings. But these are things that have come up. That led us down the path of engaging with architects on the specific issue, because we knew we were going to study it. And that's where the materials ratio issue came further into light in speaking with more, I think it was four architects participated in our engagement. Dakota can clarify that for me. But that's where it was brought to our attention, that our ratio is a little bit out of step with a lot of the cities that they see. I'm not saying that's positive or negative, one way or the other, but just trying to provide a little bit of context in terms of the source of why these topics were studied as part of the small business project. So hopefully that helps. Happy to take questions about it.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I'm talking so much at this. Planning Manager Johnson or Planning Supervisor Caston Day, can you guys talk through the, what enforcement recourse the city has for flaking, or degrading, or bubbling coatings on existing masonry?
Yeah, if I may, Dakota. Chair, so Commissioner Cunningham, that's something actually that the Environmental Health Division is very effective at enforcing and doing so aggressively. It, one of the challenges that we have is when a building is coated illegally, either because they didn't contact us to learn what our rules are, or didn't know the rules, and the painting starts happening. The city has more difficult choices ahead of it in terms of how to effectuate code enforcement in that case. The flaking peeling paint, that's much more straightforward and easy from a perspective of what the intervention is, because in most cases, those buildings are already coated. So a much more simple code enforcement situation than the alternative.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, discussion?
I will just add one thing before I forget. Mr. Johnson mentioned making the code more simple, and I think that that's totally fair. And if that's the case, then I would, my recommendation is that we, we could move forward with this, but without the change in exterior material ratio entirely, and just keeping it as is, instead of putting other requirements on it, as I had already mentioned. Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Mr. Johnson. So I'm hearing some resistance to some of the exterior coatings and secondary materials pieces of this. When it comes to making a motion to City Council here, is that something where it would be recommended that the motion is that we recommend that the City Council does not adopt this plan? Or is it that it, they, we recommend that they adopt the plan with modifications?
Yeah, Chair Commissioner Cookton, so it could happen either way. If there are elements of the policy that you support, I certainly would encourage you to adopt those elements of the ordinance. And you can do so by formal motion to remove the exterior material components of it. You could do as Commissioner, as Chair Albrecht suggested, revising the ratio to, back to 85, 15, which is our existing standard. So there's multiple things that you could do. But if the, the body is supportive of the bulk of the work that's contained within the ordinance, I would encourage you to adopt an ordinance with supporting the amended, I'm sorry, adopting motion, supporting the amended ordinance, as opposed to adopting a denial or a non-recommendation of the full ordinance. And we can certainly reflect it properly to the City Council when we report back to them.
Madam Chair, if there's no further discussion, I would take a shot at a motion here.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, Commissioner Cookton. I, maybe we just do a quick straw poll of how we feel about the, that one coating and exterior component before making a motion?
Yeah, and maybe Chair Albrecht, if I may, just, so clarification for me, too, on some guidance. Yeah, maybe the straw poll could be coating, yes to coating or no to coating, and then the primary, secondary, is it 85, 15, or 65, 35 is your, like, preference? I think that would just be helpful for me on direction.
Commissioner Cookton.
I'm sure I get a little anxious about straw polls for public hearings. I think that's something we generally do for study items, but maybe we seek legal counsel before we do something like that on a public hearing.
Mr. Toski, do you have any guidance for us on this?
Hello, sorry. I mean, a swath of sunlight here, but Chair and Commissioners, as long as you're clear on what the motion is, like, I think Nick and Dakota are right on. They're just, I want to make sure that everyone understands what the motion is and what it does. So as long as it's clear, I think you could have a motion to approve, accept these two parts, or however you see fit. I think that's fine. As far as the straw poll, I mean, I think someone should just make the motion and forego the straw poll, at least for right now. I mean, you're going to have a vote in a few minutes anyway, so.
Would anyone like to take a shot at the first motion? Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One second, please. I move to recommend the City Council adopt the Phase One Small Business Codes and Processes Ordinance, thereby amending Chapters 9, 10, and 21 of the City Code, striking the content related to exterior building materials and finish, including the paintings and coatings sections of the staff reports, and also the primary and secondary ratio and permitted building materials section.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Keep in mind, we can make another motion. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I don't think that one passes. Oh, yes. Do we need, do you need names?
If you could, please just revote on that one more time, just to make sure we get that correct.
Okay.
I think it was Cookton, aye.
Yes. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Got it.
Nay.
Opposed, nay.
All right, so that's four to three.
Yep.
Sounds like we have, yes, fails. Anyone willing to make a different motion?
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks, Chair. I'll take a stab. I move to recommend the City Council adopt the Phase One Small Business Codes and Processes Ordinance, thereby amending Chapter 9, 10, and 21 of the City Code.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the recommendation on the screen as is. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. All right, that would be a six to one. All right, anyone else want to make a motion?
Chair, if I can add just one point of suggestion. And no, and I appreciate, nothing, it's not a negative commentary on what just took place. I love the motions and Robert's rules. But no, if I, to the point around a straw poll and the intent of that, I think if I'm reading the board correctly, I think that the discussion centered around whether or not to parse out the restriction of coating, as well as the materials ratio. Maybe it would be fruitful to just do a separate side motion on that specific issue. I'm not trying to complicate it for you. But that you could move to remove the, you could remove, you could move, excuse me, to retain the 85, 15 materials ratio, for example, if you were supporting that. And then that would give you the motion, the ordinance as amended. I'm sorry, I hope I didn't butcher that, for those that that made sense.
Yes, I think we, thank you, Mr. Johnson. I think we could do that, or someone could make a motion right now, just with the make a motion right now, um, just with the motion on the screen and then amending that to, um, the 85, 15% ratio.
And Chair, if I, if I can make one context point about the reason I was suggesting that is that there's actually a lot of organizational and structural improvements to the ordinance, even if you don't support the, um, the removing the prohibition on coatings and the change to the materials ratio, there still is a lot of, uh, structural and organizational improvements to the policy that I would still recommend be considered, um, but not to overstep my role here.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I move to recommend the city council adopt the Phase One Small Business Codes and Process, Processes ordinance, thereby amending, amending chapter nine, chapter 10, and chapter 21 of the city code, striking the, uh, item related to the 65, 35 sec, uh, primary and secondary material standards.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Are we good with that motion? Is everyone good? Yeah, yeah. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
All right. That motion carries seven, six, one.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Great discussion. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Uh, that item moves on, uh, to the city council agenda on June 2nd as a public hearing item. All right. Uh, item two is a study item. It is considering approval of a draft, of the draft, um, April 10th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting synopsis. And I don't, I know we had a few folks who were not in attendance. I think we're all here.
I, I think all members were present.
All members are present? All right.
I believe so.
All right. All members are present. So looking for a motion for approval. So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, final item this evening is also a study item. It is our regular planning commission policy and issues update. Planning Manager Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Albrecht and members. Uh, thanks for the discussion. So just a quick synopsis of your upcoming meetings on, uh, May 22nd, June 5th, and June the 12th. That's the next three regularly scheduled planning commission meetings. On May 22nd, there's a public hearing scheduled for a privately initiated city code amendment to designate Health Club as a permitted use in the CS1 zoning district. Uh, so that's a public hearing. Uh, the second item on that agenda would be a study item, uh, the, a project on the city's work plan, a study of remote airport parking, uh, facilities, uh, and uses. Um, and that, those are the two items scheduled for May 22nd. The June 5th meeting has a public hearing on, uh, part two of the signed code lookback ordinance, uh, project. Uh, upon review and action on that item, the city council directed staff to prepare an ordinance to revise the city's standards for electronic sign dwell time as well as signs on tall buildings. Um, so we'll be bringing that ordinance to you on June the 5th per the city council direction. On June the 12th, a, a study item is scheduled, uh, a study of the, uh, Normandale Boulevard and 84th Street, uh, intersection, um, specifically, uh, elements within the Normandale Lake District Plan, calling for a pedestrian bridge over, uh, Normandale Boulevard. Um, that will be studied and brought to you by the city's, uh, traffic and engineering staff and planning staff is in support of, uh, that work as well. Um, so those are the three items, uh, or I'm sorry, the agendas of the three upcoming, uh, planning commission meetings. I do have one more update.
Great. Mr. Johnson.
Sorry, Chair Albrecht. Uh, the one other update I was going to mention is just that the planning commission, uh, planning commissioner application process is still open. Uh, so I encourage the public to apply, uh, to, um, uh, seek a position on the planning commission. Uh, the previously listed deadline was May 7th, but materials were sent out, uh, expressing that May 18th was actually the deadline. So the city will honor any applications received by, uh, buyer on May 18th. Um, and the process at that point will involve, uh, interviews by the city council, um, and, uh, future appointments, uh, at their first meeting in June, I believe. So just a quick update about that process.
Great. Uh, any other discussion? Commissioner Isa.
Uh, sorry, Danny Timor's fans. I don't mean to hold you guys back, but, uh, a quick question. So I would, I noticed like on the east side of Bloomington, like on the smaller neighborhood streets, there's some streets that don't have, uh, you remind me when you said signs and stuff, uh, but like, uh, that they don't have stop signs on both sides, like on, do you know why? Cause I've always, I, I, yeah, that's almost near.
I don't, uh, Chair Albrecht, I don't know if Julie Long is, um, uh, available. We could certainly, uh, promote her. She would be best equipped to answer that question. I could give you, uh, a planner's half-baked response, but I'd, I'd prefer to defer to the city engineer on that one. Thanks, Julie.
Hi, Commissioners. Um, Commissioner, Chair, Commissioner Isa, um, a lot of our, uh, local residential streets don't have stop signs. Um, engineers are weird. We have these fancy words called warrants, which are essentially the rules of why you would want to put a stop sign in. Um, and often our residential streets don't meet the warrants and studies have shown that, um, a proliferation of stop signs, like in the neighborhood where I live, where they've done what is called a basket weave and they put stops, two stop signs every other direction, um, ends up creating actually more traffic safety concerns. So, um, it's preferable that, um, drivers slow down and look both ways and kind of yield. Cause otherwise, when we put up a stop sign, you're probably going, if you live in the neighborhood, it's going to become background noise and you're going to kind of slow down and yield. But the expectation of the driver in the, uh, opposite direction is that you are going to come to a full and complete stop and that often doesn't happen.
Okay, I see. Oh, that makes a lot of sense. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Any other items for discussion? All right. Seeing none, uh, we will close out the May 8th meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. Thank you and have a good night.